Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under thy invisible, the routine justice for all.
Alrighty then. First item on our agenda is approval of the warrant.
Madam Chair, I have something to read into the record.
Go for it.
Since the immediate family members of two school committee members are teachers, the committee cannot reach a quorum due to conflicts under the conflict of interest law with respect to tonight's vote on the warrant. So we've been advised by counsel to invoke the rule of necessity to allow us to vote on such matter involving the financial interests of such family members. And by the statement of invoking the rule, detailed disclosures regarding the matter were made at the committee's April 11th, 2006 meeting and recorded in the minutes and are also in file with the town clerk and may be viewed at the town clerk's office. But I'll make a motion to approve the minute, approve the warrant.
Record.
Okay, any question, any comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's four to zero. Public approval of minutes of 6:25:19.
So moved.
Second.
Any question, any comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just one quick comment, the minutes were excellent, the detail was phenomenal. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, that too is four zero. Public participations, or anyone here for public participation? Information and reports, are there any subcommittee reports?
Um, do you want to?
You can start and I'll finish, Tom.
Steve and I met as a subcommittee this afternoon with the recreation director, Brendan Egan, and Kevin Sullivan was there. And Representative Tom Irwin Company, who's been handling the care of a couple of the towns' fields for the last year or so. The rec department has this outfit doing the Wildwood School, Wildwood Park, the Rahanus Park, I forget where else they've been doing it. But essentially, it's a new maintenance plan, which gets away from just the organic material that they've been using for the last eight years or so, Kevin said, and with which they have not had much success. So Steve and I sat with the guy for an hour and a half today, had a very interesting meeting. The rec department would like the schools to allow them to do the same treatment with the Francis Wyman and the Memorial in particular. Those are the two fields, two schools that have fields that are in regular use for youth leagues and school sports and things of that nature. I think also the rear field at Marshall Simons they mentioned. So in any event, I brought this up at a meeting, I don't know, last meeting, maybe it was two meetings ago now, when Steve and I appointed the subcommittee to meet with the guy to try to get some information. There was clearly some reluctance on some school committee members' parts about the idea of getting away from the organic material on the, on the school grounds. So the gentleman filled us in, gave us a lot of good information as to what they use, how they use it, timeframes within which they use it. I asked him to send us some written material, which I could share with everybody, and he's going to do that. So basically, I just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up that we did have that meeting. And I was impressed by the presentation. And I think if you look at the Wildwood Park, which I stopped in to see the other day, it clearly having a lot of success in terms of the quality of the grass and the playing areas and things of that nature. So I'll defer to Steve to fill you in on the particulars a little bit. But it was, to me, it's worthwhile looking into. I know there's some hesitation about doing this on school grounds, and we have a policy against it, so it will require us to change that. It would remind everybody that it's being used at Simons Park, Rahanus Park, and Wildwood Park, and it has been for the last year. So we might be saving our children from getting exposed to it on school grounds currently, but whenever they play at Simons Park, Rahanus Park, or Wildwood Park, they're playing on, on this material. So in any event, I let Steve give you his two cents on it. But I thought it was a very interesting conversation. He has offered to do a site walk with anybody who's interested, maybe sometime in early, mid-August, just to kind of show you what he'd do, or show anybody who wanted to attend what, what he has in mind. He suggested walking around the Francis Wyman Park a little bit, he could point out things that could be done. We could then drive over to Wildwood, which is just around the corner, and just to kind of get a look at as to what the results after just one year. He says typically, it takes about three years to get the full benefit of it, and then it's maintenance after that. But it's, so far, what he's had to say was very interesting, and with what I saw at the Wildwood School, it was very promising.
Steve?
Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, nice job, Tom. Just to follow up on what Tom was saying, it was a very educational meeting today. We spent a lot of time, and we spent a lot of time talking to him about safety issues. He said that they're not going to abandon organic fertilizers and things of that nature, but there are no organic weed killers. That's the major problem that we have, is the weeds tend to invade these parks over a period of time. I remember when we first did the Wildwood Park, they hydroseeded it, and I think about three or four months after they hydroseeded, it was 90 percent weeds and 10 percent grass. So he said if there was an organic weed killer product out there, he said his company would make a fortune. But he said they don't have them. The only ones that they have are the ones that eradicate everything. So if you wanted to wipe out weeds on sidewalks and things like that, they do have organic weed killers that will do that. But they don't, they're not compatible with grass. So you can't use organic weed killer products because they're just not available scientifically. The products that they use, he was talking about different federal requirements that have warning labels on different products. And there were three or four different warning labels. And the products that they use don't even qualify, he was telling us, for a warning label on the products that they apply. They apply them in liquid form, and they have these 20-foot wide spreaders that will come and they will apply the liquid herbicide, they call it, onto the surface. And he said that the herbicide is absorbed on the leaves of the plant. And when it goes into the ground, its ultraviolet rays from the sun will neutralize it. So he said it's almost, it's neutralized almost immediately what isn't absorbed onto the plant itself. So he says it's a very safe product. And that was our, one of our major concerns, is is this product going to be safe for our children? He was also talking about time of application. He said one of the, he said fortunately, one of the best times to apply the product is the end of June and the end of August. And both of those timeframes are timeframes, of course, when school's out and the kids aren't using the fields as often. There may be some non-school team functions that are there, but they would probably close the field down for a couple of days just to be on the safe side. But he was very up to speed on the, on the science of this. He said 80 percent of the product that they're going to be putting on the fields is probably organic, and only 15 to 20 percent would be what we might call, you know, chemical fertilizers or herbicides. So he did suggest that the school committee members meet out at the sites. Francis Wyman would be perhaps a test site, we could try Francis Wyman. It needs to be at a site where we have irrigation, because these products have to be watered in, in order for them to be effective. So his recommendation was that we have a time, and anyone can be out there, not just school committee members, we have a time when we all agree to go out to Francis Wyman. And he would answer questions, he would explain what's out there. They do a lot of comprehensive soil analysis to make sure that they're treating the soil with what's necessary. But he's a very experienced individual who knows a lot about soil technology. And he's not against organic, he's highly in favor of it. And he was talking about the process by which organic fertilizers work to fertilize the soil, how they get broken down by microbes, and way above my understanding in some, in some respects. But I think it's a good idea for us to look at it. He was also talking about the safety of turf fields. And when they're, when they're healthy, and they're not infested with grubs, and there's not patches where the grass isn't growing, the kids perform better and it's safer for them. Studies show that injuries on some of grass fields are a lot less severe than injuries on artificial surfaces. So I think, I speak for Tom, we were both pretty impressed with the presentation, and we think it's worthwhile. The Recreation Commission has been trying for eight years to get strictly organics to work. And if you talk to the head of the Recreation Commission, Mr. Sullivan, he'll say, "We tried it, and it's just unfortunately, our turf fields aren't thriving." Most communities are doing this, according to what we've heard. They don't have statistical numbers. I asked them if they could get us some statistics on how many communities are using these types of fertilizers and herbicides, and they're going to look into that. They, Mr. Sullivan said that the organic model was something that was modeled after Marblehead. They couldn't find too many communities in the area that were just doing the strictly organic controls. But they found Marblehead, and he, he just thinks that it's, it's time for Burlington to do a better job with the fields, and he thinks this is the way to go. And I think if we can demonstrate that the products are safe, I think it's something that we should, we should give some serious thought to. I was a little skeptical at first about the safety. I did a little online research. But this, this individual was very persuasive in assuring Tom and I that the chemicals have been studied extensively by the government, and they're not something that we have to worry about. So I think he did a great job, and I would encourage the members and Ms. Simon, when she returns, to go out to the sites, meet with this gentleman, ask him questions. He'll, he answered every question that I think that Tom and I posed. So I think it was a good meeting, and I think we should, we should look into it further. Thank you.
Go ahead.
This discussion must have been a meeting that I wasn't at in June. So unless something has changed with the way the government's been testing these chemicals, they are not tested for children. They're tested on adult, healthy male tissue. They do not test these chemicals with regard to the inert materials that are in there. They might be absorbed into the leaves, but then when you have dew, rain, mud, it does come back up. So I would like to strongly have that conversation, sit down with him, and see where he's getting this information. Because in the past 15 years since I've been on top of this studying this, talking with Mr. Robinson, I've been on a number of boards. I still am in touch with Mr. Osborne. I haven't seen any of that change.
We made it very clear to him that there was some reservations from the school department's side of things. So, and I said, you know, particularly-
So you need that before, even?
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Okay.
No, I, you know, we've, we've had, we've had these discussions before, plus both Martha and Christine were skeptical when I brought it up last time. I brought it up, it was the meeting, you were gone. The rec commission asked me to do it, because they wanted to expand the program. So we made it very clear to the guy that that's, that's a main concern in that, you know, we'd be looking for some literature or some test results or some, something that'll show us that it's, that it's safe. And he told us he would get us that, he's going to send it to Brendan, and Brendan will forward it to me, and then I'll send it around to everybody. So it's, he understands that it's a little bit of an uphill climb if he thinks, if he wants to get this program implemented, and the rec department knows it as well. But he made a very good, as Steve said, a very good presentation. I don't know nearly about it, as much about it as some people do, including you. So it sounded good to me, but I understand that there's, there's a ways to go.
And there's a lot of pressure. People like green, green grass, grass, no weeds. So I understand that pressure, it's difficult, but the same point-
And the one thing I do agree with him on, I think, and it's not just aesthetic, it looks nice when it's green, but when it is healthy, thick grass, that it's safer to play on. But it's, you know, I remember before we got the, the artificial surface at the high school, the football field was just hard, compacted mud, essentially. And, you know, on a cold winter November night, you fall on that, it's like falling on concrete. It clearly was not a safe surface. But a good, a maintained, you know, grass field, I think is, is very safe. And that's, so it's not just the aesthetics of looking at a beautiful green grass, being able to maintain the playing surface, I think is, is better for the kids playing on it.
So again, I'd be curious how with chemicals, he's able to get the roots at three inches deep and, and the aeration, all of that.
Very special, special chemicals.
Look for, look forward to that discussion.
Sure, no, and like I said, he understands there's going to be, has to be some more discussions. If, if people are interested, I told him I would, I would throw out the possibility of meeting with him out there. He's willing to do it. He said Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of any week, just give him a couple of weeks heads up. So, you know, if somebody wants to pick a day and a time around the second week of August, I can line them up.
Perfect, thank you.
Just throw in my two cents worth. My husband happens to be very into organic gardening and organic lawns. And I think that no weed killers exist might not be exactly accurate. But I would defer to him. In fact, I will ask him. But-
I did bring up your husband's lawn, by the way.
Yeah, I talked about that.
They said Mrs. Monaco is going to bring up her husband's lawn, because-
Now, the thing with organics is that you have to know what you're doing, you have to do it.
Right.
And it's expensive.
Correct.
And if you don't pay for it, and if you don't apply the things that need to be applied at the right times, you're going to get weeds. And you're going to get all kinds of other things, and you're not going to get that kind of lawn that you want. It does take a lot of work. Now, I understand that it may be too much effort to put into a whole field. I don't really know that. But I simply don't believe that it's not possible to do it.
He did say, because we asked him about that, and I, like I said, I did bring up your lawn. He, he was going through different available types of synthetic materials, or then organic. And the organic was significantly more expensive.
Oh, yeah, big time.
So I'm sure that plays a role in it. If you need X amount of applications to do it properly, and it costs Y amount of dollars to do each application, from a municipal standpoint, I'm guessing that maybe they cut out a couple just because it's a numbers thing.
That's right. And I, and just, just to make it clear to everybody, it does require, if we were to do it, if we were to, it does require a policy change.
Right.
And a policy change on this board requires four votes.
Right.
Not three. So it's an uphill-
Yeah, no, and they know that. And I don't think they're expecting to back up their truck, you know, next week and do it. I said, "We're probably, best case scenario, going to have to talk about this a bit. And, you know, by the time a decision is made, we're probably going to be past this fall's application period." So it's looking at something that will, in all likelihood, start up next, next-
And in the meantime, well, our fields aren't going to look very good, because probably the organics aren't being used, aren't being used frequently enough.
No, no, they're still doing, they're doing whatever they have been doing as far as our fields go.
Yeah, but it was, it was never enough. And it might be a money issue, maybe we need to address the money issue. I don't know.
I'm sure, that'll be one of the things to talk about.
Okay, so, go ahead.
One other thing that he mentioned, Chris, about organics, is that they do, they do work better on lawns than they do on playing fields that get a lot of play. And he said, "When you have kids that are on these fields as frequently as we do in this town," he said, "Organics take a long time to get into the soil and to do what they're supposed to do, and they don't have the same recovery period that non-organics do. The fertilizer just, it gets right into the plant, the organics gets into the soil, and they allow the soil to make the plant better." Because I had that same thought in my mind, like, you know, what's the difference? So that was just his response. They work on lawns, but he said you really need to think about supplementing the organics. Because he's not saying don't use them. He's saying, "We're certainly going to use the organics." He's talking about twice a year using the supplementation to help the plants, the grass, which is a plant, sustain and recover from the beating that it takes from use. So that was, that was his response, because Tom did bring that up.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Next item, any other subcommittee reports, ways and means? Instruction and technology?
Madam Chair, I just have a few quick things on instruction and technology. Since we have folks here in the audience, would it make sense to bump up the transportation contract conversation? I don't think you guys would object to, without waiting. So let me just start with the, just a few quick things. I had sent some articles to the school committee, and I just wanted to highlight some of those things already. So our, Gati Ahar, our recent graduate, in fact, our valedictorian this year, was interviewed and featured in a publication from ISTI, which is the National Technology Education Conference. It was on artificial intelligence. I think I forwarded that article to you. She had presented in Chicago, and she had done some programming of chatbots, and so she was featured in the article, which was great. The Amazon Future Engineers Program, I think I also sent you that publication, where they, for their National Future Engineers Program, they featured their reverse internship at Burlington High School as part of that. So they had pictures from Burlington High School and the work that was done here, and wanted to make sure I thanked Amazon and all the volunteers that came into Burlington High School to work with our students. So that was great. And as a part of that, I think I sent you the governor's press release. We had talked about the innovative pathways. I think we were ahead of the governor's press release, but the press release came out this week. Again, Burlington High School is one of four high schools that was awarded an Innovative Pathways grant. Our focus is on computer science, and it's going to be, the money will be used to help amplify some of the programs that we have going already, again, like the Amazon Future Engineers Program, and a lot of the reverse internships. It's meant to get students exposed to industry earlier, get them earning some dual enrollment credits, get them placed out in terms of internships and externships. And, and that program's been exploding at Burlington High School already. So I think all of these sort of accolades, I think, reflect a tremendous amount of work from high school staff. And, and I think they've just been really pushing to make sure our kids are having experiences that are relevant to the skills that they're going to need as graduates. So just wanted to highlight that. I've been sending you those, those articles, and hopefully you're seeing some of the results. I should actually probably share them with you all, and I haven't, I'm sorry. I won't do that, because it's, again, these are obviously national companies, and they are, and the governor's program is very selective. So I think it speaks highly of the work being done at the high school. So I'll make sure I share those with you. So with that, Madam Chair, with your permission, if we could go to the 8A, the school transportation contract approval?
Yep.
And Bob will, I'll turn it to Bob.
So you and your packets have an agreement that was prepared by our legal teams. And here in the crowd, we have John McCarthy and Christine Valcourt, President and Vice President of Trombley. And we have discussed this contract, and they are in support of it. Obviously, they would like it signed, and if you are all in agreement, then we would have that discussion to move forward with this agreement. So.
Tom?
Just to double check, there was some, I saw some emails and whatnot going back and forth between the administration and Darren about things we want to try to get into the contract, do you know that got squared away?
I think it got squared away to the extent that we could get it squared away. I think Darren had direct conversation. What was the process, Bob, a little bit? Because Darren spoke directly, I believe, with representation from Trombley. And so I think Darren was representing our interest in this, obviously. And I think he got the contract to where he felt he could support it. So that's-
So that was, that was basically my question. It's where we want it to be, where we're recommending, the administration's recommending.
Yes.
Positive. I would, I would then make the motion, Madam Chair, that the school committee enter into an agreement for school transportation services, per the agreement provided to us, and I back up with the Trombley Motor Coach Service, Inc.
Mr. Murphy, Darren actually included the motion language for us as well, so he did. So-
Nice. I move to approve and execute the school transportation contract between Burlington Public Schools and Trombley Motor Coach Service, Inc., for term of five years, conditioned upon a satisfactory 100 percent performance bond being furnished for the first year of the contract as required by the contract and bid specification documents upon our election, and further reserving the school district's right to require a firmance bond, a performance bond in future years of the contract if so elected.
Second. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Tom?
I would just welcome Mr. McCarthy to the, to the town. Thank you. Wish you the best of luck, and we look forward to working with you.
I can give you an update if you want.
Sure.
I brought Christine along, Vice President of Trombley. We have since met with the existing drivers. I checked with the terminal dispatcher, Judy Dove. 16 drivers have applied, four monitors have applied. So, and we did give a cutoff date by Friday, so we knew what we needed. But right now, it looked like you had a good, a good support of drivers coming back into the town. So we appreciate you giving us the opportunity, and, you know, we met with Bob. We also believe that it would probably be good, we'd go to Bob, about meeting with the parents, having a meeting with the parents, especially the parents of the regulator, if they, if they chose, if they choose, just to get, you know, some voice for the customer, be able to hear what the parents' needs are, and get that in out before school starts. Just take some of the anxiety out of the transition.
Good.
Anyone else?
I appreciate that, and I look forward to that meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Isla.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is this working? Beats me, isn't it?
Can't tell. I'll talk about it, I usually do. So the only question I had is, I know there was a lot of options on the contract, as the school committee decides which options they want, because the price given here seems to be without any of the options.
Bobby?
Currently, right now, we have not chosen any additional options. So the optional hardware that was in there, we did not choose. So the contract still states that we can, but right now, we're choosing not to. I think that would be at the direction of the school committee if we want to. So I think we need to have further discussions if we are going to choose those options.
Okay. And was I sure if that needed to be resolved prior to signing this or not?
Yeah, it doesn't.
I have a question. I have been in communication with the special ed parents group, and I'm not sure exactly how much of the special ed transportation is done through this particular contract. Do you know? Can you, can anyone tell me how much of it?
The number of riders, or-
Or how many buses, how many vans, how much of it is done?
In-town, in-town transportation, yeah.
In-town transportation, okay. So I assume that you got the request from the parents? I think I forwarded it to you.
It was requested. I didn't, I didn't see it.
Okay. So, sorry to take everyone's time, but I do feel I need to read this.
Is that there?
Uh, no, I got it. "As a Board of Education, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, we are writing in response to the bus contract being awarded to Trombley Motor Coach. We would like to renew the concerns we raised at the school committee meeting Tuesday evening with regard to the track record of the companies." "They are requesting the following. Install video and sound recording monitors on all buses in which special needs and language-limited children ride, per the contract." I don't know if that's in this contract or not. "Perform regular and random quality control checks of footage from these monitors. Allow parents of children on buses to review the footage as required, as requested in response to incidents." Not like they want to see the videos every other day, but if there's an incident, they want to be able to see the video. "We also request the footage reviewed as part of an open investigation be maintained by the school district and by the bus company, of course." and by the bus company, of course. Until all parties agree the issue has been resolved and at the request of parent and guardian, additionally kept as part of the student's temporary record." Now, I understand that might be a problem, but I think keeping it shouldn't be a problem as safety is an important part of the student's educational process. The second thing they asked is establish a clear process for complaint documentation by creating a form that is easily accessible on the VPS website. I understand that there is a form. Is that correct, Eric? There is a form? And that if it needs to be updated or made easier to find or whatever, we can work that out with the special ed director. This form will allow students and caregivers to record important incident details in a timely and concise manner and will help ensure proper tracking and data collection. We've been personally contacted by parents who shared their experiences and have alleged that Mr. McCarthy's companies had demonstrated a history of covering up problems. Now, that's just their opinion, okay? It's imperative that the school be involved in the reporting process and that a record of such reports is available. And third, careful consideration that the contract language around the performance bond clearly reflects and is sensitive to the needs of riders of special needs, including the potential discipline of such children. And they go on to say they're representing the parents with special needs. So my understanding is that sometimes the, what I've heard is that sometimes the video cameras don't work. They're broken, they're down, or that they're recorded over before things come to light that you might want to check on. And so before I vote on this contract, I would like your assurance that the special ed vehicles will have working.
So are you asking for that? Are you asking for?
I am personally.
So is the school committee asking for cameras to be put on the vehicle?
In the, in the special ed buses, I don't know. Does the committee want to ask for that or not? Is it part of the contract?
As an additional, as an option.
As an option.
Yeah, so we don't currently have cameras in the existing buses that we had previously. We don't have them in the new buses.
So how many, how many special ed buses are there?
Well, we don't have all the, oh, we don't have all the information from, right now, I identified four. Was it four or five?
No, right now, sorry, right now, it's looking like approximately four. I don't have a complete list. I have a partial list, but some of that information is still coming to me. Plus, we additionally have four of the early childhood estimated, because again, I only have a partial list on that.
So that would be a total of eight?
The preschool early childhood is part of the special needs. It could be as, as many as it needs.
As many as eight.
Right now, I have 2,200 vehicles. I have 2,200 cameras. I will put those cameras in those vehicles at no additional charge. What I'd like to do, though, is I'd like to meet with those parents.
Okay.
Listen, transition is difficult.
Yeah.
A lot of stories go around. I can assure you, I've met with the special needs director, who also worked with another community. Some of the requests in here are difficult to do because there's a lot called FURPA, you know? And, and so having parents get on and be able to see all those, that would be up to the school department whether or not they want to show that video to any particular other parent. That, that would be a property. As far as storing that video, depending on how much you require for storage, that could be costly. And yes, 85% of the times, the cameras work. You're taking a hard drive and you stick it in on the bus and it goes up, it's, you know, it's like computers. It's like any other technology. It bounces around inside of the vehicle. We do the best we can. We run the best cameras we possibly can. Heat, there could be a bad disk that actually goes off. The camera still looks like it's working. 85% of the time, they work. I mean, we've, we've, we've seen all different, all certain kinds of things on, on videos. Sometimes parents hear that the video didn't work and it legitimately didn't work. I mean, I, about 85% of the times, they're a great non-biased witness and tool that's on that bus. The other thing is you have to make sure that we advertise that we're using audio because obviously, you can't just record somebody speaking without letting them know that they're speaking. So again, the school committee and, and, you know, the superintendent would have to make the decision how that information is released to a parent that's concerned about an incident that happened on the bus because there are other children that would be on that bus that their identities should be kept concealed.
Okay, so the, the two things that I want assurance on, and the rest can be worked out for perhaps the next meeting as an agenda item, Sharon, you can work out the details of, of this. But you have just said, I believe, that you're willing to put the, the cameras and that we can come to an agreed upon amount of time before they're written over.
Well, I can tell you how long it takes them to read over. They, they record about 48 hours before they start recording over, before the data starts, you know, repeating itself. So 48 hours, you know, a four-hour run per day. So, you know, you could get up to two weeks' worth of video on there, depending on the length of time that that actual recorder is on. But that's about, about it. The best thing to do, if you have an incident on the vehicle and you want, you want that recording, you should ask for it immediately.
You have to know about it. That's the issue.
Right. If you tell me about it, or tell Christine, or tell Jean, whoever, you tell them about it three months down the road, chances are the video's not.
No, I agree completely.
People don't necessarily. And again, to, there's a tremendous amount of footage that is recorded as we're standing here. So it takes, you know, man-hours to sit there and actually watch those videotapes on a regular basis. We don't look at them unless we know that there's an issue. We pull them randomly to check them to make sure that they're still working. And we have the maintenance team also check them on a quarterly basis to make sure that the cameras are working the way they're supposed to. Also, part of the drivers' circle check to make sure that that light is on. And again, just because the light is on at times, about 15% of the time, there's still a failure rate. All that information is actually on, you know, a website you can look at, you know, to, if you were to shop for these particular devices. But we spend about $1,200 a unit.
Okay. Well, it's an, it's an important factor. I appreciate your offer to make sure that the special needs buses and the preschool have.
There's another device that we have on the vehicle. It's also GPS and it's live. So we can see the vehicle live. So if there is a question about time or if a vehicle's showing up late or if we see the vehicle, the dispatcher, it's, it's a pretty high-tech vehicle, we can see that. We also have a child checkmate in the vehicle. Child checkmate is that device that, I read the article that was brought up, that there was a child left in the front of the bus. It was partly right, but it was, the other part wasn't right. There was a child that was sleeping on the bus when the driver went home. But that's where the driver parked. And when he went to do his child checkmate, which is a button in the back of the bus, to make sure that he wouldn't shut that bus off with a child on the bus, where he should have done that check was at the school. He did it at his home and that's where he found the child. And that's where he parked the bus. So every one of your buses, even your lot buses, will have the child checkmate system on it.
I, I think one of the problems that is a concern for some of these parents is children who are either non-verbal or partially verbal.
Right.
Who can't express, can't explain, this happened, that happened.
Right.
And it's very important to these people to be comfortable, having their children on the buses. So I appreciate your offer.
Yeah.
I will vote for the contract based on your word and I would ask that at the next meeting, we have the details of which buses they'll be on and how long the recording will be for. And Eric, whatever you figure out for review or timeframe or who can see them or when, okay? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Kristin.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I apologize, but I just want to reiterate my concern working in other districts, seeing these buses show up 10 minutes early prior to school and the kids just sitting on there. And in Burlington, that's, that's not what we would like to see. The past, I don't know, 20 years, they show up at the middle school and they immediately get off the bus and go right in. And I know some towns say it's a problem with traffic, but it's been able to happen. And also, the, within a half hour, I know you got the email, so I'm just reiterating it because I wasn't here saying in person.
I actually didn't get this email.
No, this is a different, when we talked about, it was, I think, Dr. Conti had sent it. I'm sorry, I was away. So everything's all jumbled.
Are you referring, I'm sorry, are you referring to the regular ed?
Regular ed, yes.
So I can tell you that I think including the routes, we are including the exact same routes that A and F had. They had a, they had a bus route system that was working. Obviously, there'll be some, some instances of added students, new students that may not have a stop that will accommodate a stop for. But routes, stops, time, other than maybe a couple minutes here and there for some added stops onto a route, are going to be pretty much identical to what you have now.
Excellent.
Our goal is to keep as much consistency with this contract as we can. Every vehicle has GPS on it. If you find a vehicle is pulling in early, because we all know sometimes drivers change routes, pick up the phone, call me, I'll pull the GPS. Yep, they are. My name, you can't do that. You need to start your route on time. It's just a conversation. So the better we communicate, the better job we're going to be able to do.
And the good news is, the majority of your drivers have seemed interested in transportation, especially the special needs drivers and the special needs monitors. We had a great meeting with them, again, because it was such a, a good output received to the new company. I think that also helps.
It, it does.
Again, I think with the, with the equipment that's on the bus, I think if there is an issue about a bus showing up early or showing up late, we can make those adjustments. And we're working, we're just, we're wrapping it on, on routes and asking questions.
And there are those random times, right before Christmas, the day before the mall route gets all backed up. So we understand that. There might be those, those times.
And there'll be an explanation. You'll have a digital explanation, rather than just going, oh, by the way. They'll, they'll ask for a GPS report, we'll print it out and it'll, it'll say exactly what happened.
Yep.
And those are live, they're immediate. I mean, you could call me on the weekend and I could be looking at my phone and tell you where a bus is.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, there's no further discussion. We put the motion to a vote. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained. So the motion carries 301. All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. Next, where do you want to go, Eric? Dance around as much as you want.
Well, the next one was Bob, so we'll wait for Bob to get back. Let's, Alex, could we see new business for 200, please? The Town of Burlington Anti-IDling Policy, a first reading. We had already had an anti-idling policy. Town Hall just asked us, Paul, asked that our policies just align. And again, I don't have any issue with that. If the school committee would just review this as a, as a first reading. Just so, school and town would have common language and I don't even think there'd be a problem to maintaining both policies. But as the town, I think, is going to be making more effort, it seems like, in, in this area, which I think is a positive thing, that we align our policies if we already have an existing policy or if we don't have a policy, we can adopt the town's language or the school committee could consider adopting the, the town's language as we move forward.
All right, this is the first reading.
This is the first reading.
Okay. I do have a statement. Martha, Mrs. Simons unable to be here tonight, she asked me to read this. She is pleased that the Town of Burlington is beginning to consider environmental and energy efficiency policies as our high school students have suggested to us. I believe that we, as a school committee, can initiate and encourage actions like these to help reduce health and environmental hazards and to reduce our carbon footprint. I'm in support of the anti-idling and electric vehicle policy that is being proposed tonight. That's from Martha. Does anyone else have any comments? Steve.
Yeah, I think that our anti-idling policy is, is better than the one that the selectmen have adopted. It's got provisions for penalties and fines.
Maybe they'd like to adopt hours.
They would adopt hours, really, I think. I don't see a problem with adopting both, but I certainly wouldn't want to un-adopt hours or revoke our anti-idling policy. I think it's more specific. And in addition, we're supposed to have it pursuant to chapter, chapter 90, I think it is, 16B. So we're required to have our own policy. So I don't have a problem, I, I think there might be some minor inconsistencies and I'm not quite sure why we need two of them. I don't really specifically have a problem endorsing the selectmen's policy as long as it's cumulative and not replacing what we have. They also have a, it looks like a separate policy regarding fuel-efficient vehicles. So I think there's two issues. One's the fuel-efficient policy, which we don't have, I don't believe. And I don't have a problem supporting that one. It's hard to tell, though, what they're talking about because they reference, they reference some, some phase.
I couldn't understand it.
Phase four of some list that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has. It's a criterion four of some mass department, energy resources, green communities division. So, I mean, that, that could, that could fluctuate from, from year to year. So I'm not quite sure what this whole policy is, is about in terms of, I mean, are we insisting on electric cars? Are we insisting on hybrid cars? Are we insisting on cars that get more than 25 miles a gallon? Pretty ambiguous. It would be nice if we maybe could get some clarification on what that, at least presently means. I don't know if Bob knows anything about that list.
Well, again, we, we can try to get some of the background. I think the positive news here is the town is sharing some policy language and it makes sense that we are sort of at least aware of their policy language and trying to be as consistent. We don't have very many vehicles at all. So the, the vast majority of vehicles that are operating on the school side are buses and we don't own those. I think we have, how many? Three? Two trucks? And I think trucks in my sort of brief reading of the policy were one of the vehicles that was exempt. Obviously, if they come up with some sort of electric functioning truck at some point, we would, we would look at that. But I just honestly think they're looking for some alignment. They may not have even been aware that we had a, a policy in place already. So I think it was, again, good intentions and maybe this will be like a belt and suspender situation where we have both, I guess.
Tom.
I wonder if, rather than adopting a second policy and creating confusion on which, which applies and which doesn't, I mean, I agree with what Steve said. Ours seems to certainly be more school-specific. It talks, it speaks to school uses. But maybe we can modify our, our existing policy somehow by incorporating the town's policy into ours as an exhibit or a rider or addendum to be used when more appropriate or something vague to that effect. Because you're right, we don't, we only have a couple of trucks. Everything else is contracted out and they have to comply with, with, with our, with our anti-idling. But we don't, we don't have vehicles. But who knows, 15 years from now, we might have something different going on. So I just think, I, I, I don't think it's a good idea to have two of these policies sitting side by side in the book. It's just going to create confusion. But if we kind of piggyback the town's on to ours to, to apply when applicable, you know, some, something vague along that was lying. So they're both still there. We, we acknowledge the town hall, that we, we appreciate that they came to us with it and we're certainly willing to, to, to go and to work with them on it. But we also have our own that, and it doesn't make sense to have two. And I think ours is more school-specific.
Anyone else? I'd like to suggest that we send our policy over to the town and ask them if there's anything in it or not in it that they would like to see in it. Maybe we could just modify our own policy if there's something they think is missing.
I mean, I, I guess I don't know this for sure, but the same way we get pre-written policies from the.
Yeah.
I'm sure they get something from the Mass Municipal Association. So the stuff in there that's not in ours, clearly, whether it really technically applies to us or not. So, I mean, they're going to say, yes, there is things in, in ours that's not yours. Can you put that in? And then how do you mesh those two together, right?
The, the only other thing I can think of is, is if there's potentially grant money available, that maybe a requirement for the grant would be that both the municipality and the school district sort of adopt. district sort of adopt language or something like that. So, let me, I'll have a conversation with Paul, and we'll see exactly what his needs are, and I like the idea of just putting it as an addendum as well, off an existing policy, and again, if we can do that. It could just be as simple as they weren't aware that we already had a policy in place. So, if that's the case, then, but that's why we have a first and a second reading.
So, we'll deal with that at the next meeting. Okay, moving on.
Alex, let's, let's do summer projects. Bob is ready.
All right, I don't even know where to begin. So, first, I do need to thank the maintenance staff, the custodial staff, and clerical staff. I thanked them at the previous meeting for the year that we just finished, but when I walk around the buildings, it looks like a mild war zone. You have furniture in the hallway, you have doors that are taped up because we just waxed the floor, you go into people's offices, and there are just stacked piles high of envelopes, boxes, papers. There's a lot that happens during the summer, and people just think that it's a slow, you know, slow time of the year. It's not. But if we want to talk about some projects, since we were just talking about environmental, let's go right to a non-warrant article, the free light bulbs that we got. At the last meeting, I discussed us getting ten thousand free four-foot LED bulbs. We actually just got twenty-three hundred more in different sizes and shapes. In this room right now, you'll see that there's LED bulbs throughout the high school and through five of our schools. We've already installed close to nine thousand of the original ten thousand that came in, so we're actually going to be requesting more. So, we had the company come back and do a site walkthrough, and we're going to be requesting ten thousand more bulbs, so free if we can get them.
That's a lot of bulbs.
It's a lot of bulbs. So, again, I want to thank the crew on that. We have a lot of warrant articles that are in the mix, and like I said, as far as war zone goes, it's this time of year where we are starting to see the fruit of all the labor, but we're not seeing the end results yet. So, at Fox Hill, we have four walls that are all framed and wired and so forth. We have had the building and electrical inspectors over there, so we can actually start closing them up now. But again, when you walk through those hallways, you just see a lot of destruction and a lot of, you know, sawdust and things like that, but we're trying to maintain the cleanliness of the buildings. Francis Wyman, same thing. We have four bathrooms that are down right now. When you walk into them, they're just empty. I think one of the bathrooms I was in today had one sink on the wall. And again, floors are going to be replaced right now. All the parts have been ordered for the partitions, new toilets, new sinks. The plumbing has been upgraded already, so now we're just waiting for the other parts of that project to happen. If we move on to Marshall Simons, we've been painting and repairing walls for the past couple of weeks. We've already gone through close to thirty gallons of paint over there, so there's a lot of work happening. The cafeteria tables have been ordered. They're not due until roughly the first week of August, so we're just tracking that timeline to make sure that they're in. Pine Glen, same exact thing. Floors have been cleaned left and right, LED bulbs are being installed, two new bulbas are being installed this week. They're being upgraded to not just the bulbas themselves, but the top fill stations that we have throughout some of our schools. Sewer pump has not been installed yet. We do have the estimates on those, but with one of the plumbing companies that we're working with, they're checking out a new solution that we're entertaining right now that's similar in price, but we want to obviously make sure we do our due diligence to see which one we'll go with. So, we haven't committed to that yet, but we're still on track before September one. As far as here at the high school, I don't know if you've driven past the band field, which is the practice field behind student parking lot. The project adventure course has been mapped out. We've also been permitted through the conservation department, so that's a go. We've ordered the poles. We did just get a notice the past few days that the poles are on back order. So, we're looking at about a two, possibly three-week delay on that, so we may not make the first day of school for the project adventure course. But the company is pushing very hard, so I don't want to commit to say we won't, but right now, we are experiencing a small delay. Walkie-talkies and blue buttons have been ordered. I've had numerous conversations with Tom Fornias from the police department, which I want to thank, and both companies that we're buying the products from. We have another meeting tomorrow. Wiring has been done for a lot of the equipment already, so again, once those products start coming in next week is when we'll start doing the distribution and the installation of the walkie-talkies and the blue buttons. Last year, we had a warrant article to buy fifty projectors and install two hundred projectors, so it was a multi-year project. This year, built into the operating budget, we purchased fifty projectors and another six out of our operating budget, and we're using last year's warrant article for the installation. Fifteen projectors have already been installed, so there's about thirty-five left to finish that project, but we expect to have all fifty done before the summer's over. The Francis Wyman fire alarm and the air conditioning, one bid went out today for the Francis Wyman fire alarm, and the Francis Wyman air conditioning is going out to bid on the following week on Monday. So, again, we expect to have those on track. The Marshall Simons boilers also out to bid next week as well. So, that one, we don't have to have starting before the start of school, but we definitely need to have the boiler installed before we get to the cold weather. So, again, it seems like we're on track for all of those projects. There's just a lot of moving parts right now throughout every one of our buildings. So, I'm sure I'm missing something, because there's just so many notes here, but.
Middle school paving, I saw that it was all torn up.
Sure. I left that one out because it wasn't us. So, the town is actually paving the parking lot from the middle school cafeteria down to Locust Street. We had discussed it at a prior meeting. I know there were concerns about doing the sidewalk, which, again, they're not addressing, but they are re-grinding the whole entire surface, repaving the whole surface, extending the sidewalk, and putting an entrance ramp, so a handicap-accessible ramp to the sidewalk right by the entrance that goes up to the gym. There was not one there before, so you'll be able to walk or ride all the way down to the entrance of the football field. And they've already started grinding all of that, and that is expected to be done about the middle of next week. So, I think that's it for now.
Okay.
I was at Memorial and Marshall Simons last week. We have about three hundred kids in our summer programs, so Memorial's actually very busy. It's not much smaller than, it doesn't have many fewer students than it does during the academic year. And we still really like having Summer Central at the middle school. We were forced to do that two summers ago because of the painting at Francis Wyman, and what's great about it is students can be in the summer reading program till twelve thirty, and then Summer Central staff walks over to Memorial, picks the kids up, and takes them to the middle school, and so they, families can get coverage if they need it all day. And I think the feedback's been great from families. We're not transporting kids, and so I think that schedule's worked out well, but the teachers are all working very hard, and again, I think the biggest issue they were having was just with the Wind Street, and I want to just thank the police department. They were sending crews over in the morning to help with traffic and parent drop-off and things like that, so I wanted to make sure I thanked the Burlington Police Department.
Okay, Steve?
A question for Bob. On the air conditioning at Francis Wyman, assuming we accept one of the bids in the next week or two, is that a project that may be done by September, or is that like October? What's your forecast?
Wishful thinking, since we haven't met with the companies that made bid on it yet, there's a potential, but highly unlikely that it may be done before September one. And then, given, obviously, the work environment of when the students get back, a lot of construction companies do like to start early, and also, some of them like to work late, so there is the potential that we can work on off-hours and get it done early in the year. But again, we haven't met with those companies yet or received any bids on that, so I'll probably have to update you at our next meeting.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Bob. Financial update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is going to be sort of an in-between month, so we don't have a financial printout yet, because the printout that you would be getting for fiscal twenty is, at this point, still basically just the budget. And Nicole, we talked today, we're still closing out nineteen, so is that, we're looking good for the close-up.
Yeah, everything's, there's no issues with closing out nineteen, just sort of a matter of crossing Ts and dotting Is between the budget, grants, our special revenue funds. So, until I have sort of all the numbers settled, that's at what time I'd like to issue you guys the report for the year.
So, we're just not done yet. We did have a transition in the business office, so our financial analysts wanted to work closer to home, so we posted that job, and we're, so we're short-staffed again. We're trying to move on that position to get another person hired. We have asked the town to reach out to Powers and Sullivan on our behalf, because we've been reaching out as well. With the July fourth, I know that seems a long time ago, but a lot of people took two weeks there, so we're still trying to get the information on the revolving accounts and on the sort of financial help, the agreed-to procedures that we entered into with Powers and Sullivan. So, I don't have that for you. Again, as soon as we get that, you'll get it, it's a public document, so I just don't have it yet. But we've asked the town to contact them as well, again, on our behalf, because I think they're working on a lot of year-end things that were happening, and Nicole, you've been reaching out regularly as well. The last thing, and again, Nicole and I have been talking, and I know there are some questions at the last school committee meeting. We have a deadline for the town meeting warrant in September prior to our next meeting, so I'd like to put a placeholder on there with school committee's permission. I don't have the specific language yet. I'd work with Darren on specific language if we wanted to have town meeting reduce our fiscal twenty allocation based on the bus contract that you just signed this evening. We still have a lot of unknown factors, so we register a bunch of kids in August and even some in September, so again, we'll have the placeholder there, so I won't say that, again, we're not going to do anything, or we missed a deadline. I don't have the language. Darren will work on some language, because that might be important to some town meeting members. But I'm also understanding that this committee discussed if our enrollment explodes, we might have to go back in September anyway, so like I said, I just want to have all the information, but if everything stays exactly as it is, and we're not going to need anything else, then the school committee can certainly, at the August meeting, read over some suggested language from Darren, and then determine whether you want to go forward with that warrant article at September's town meeting.
Do we need a vote for the placeholder, Tom?
Not at August.
What is the, is a August meeting prior to the deadline?
No.
It's after, so we have to vote for the placeholder tonight, then.
Just your opinion, I'm not even sure I need a vote. I just, I'm just, if you said don't do it, I'm just going to say.
I think we have to vote the warrant article before the deadline in order to get it on the warrant. We can fill in the number afterwards.
I just don't have the right language for you.
That's okay.
We can always, I think we can amend it as well, as long as we have something on the books that can be tweaked, as long as it's not way out of our field, and the number can be tweaked as well.
So, again, my recommendation, again, in speaking with Nicole, and we sort of had similar thoughts and arrived to the same place without a whole lot of discussion, it's just that when we overspent, town supported us, so I just think it would make sense that we ask, we would reduce our request.
I agree. We had that conversation after the last meeting with Mr. Eiler as well, and I think it's important to do that.
Yeah, so I would recommend that. I just, again, I just don't know if there's particular language that we have to.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that the committee submit a placeholder warrant article for the September town meeting to reduce the approved bus contract at the May town meeting by an amount to be determined in order to reflect the new contract that the committee approved this evening.
Second. Does that work? Was it actually a bus contract approval?
Yeah, I, I think, just to be a little more clear, town meeting only approved a five-year contract at town meeting and an entire school budget. So, I think if you're going to make a motion, I think what it needs to be is to reduce the entire school budget.
Reduce the operating budget by the amount, by the delta.
It's going to be operating and accommodated.
There was no approval of a specific amount for a school bus contract.
Our operating budget.
Just the operating budget was reduced by that amount.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to.
Reduce our operating.
Reduce our operating budget.
By an amount equal to.
And accommodated.
By an amount to be determined.
Nicole's saying and accommodated, I'm not sure if we would even be required to do that, because if the accommodated is overspent, it's just going to, it's a town account anyway, so.
And it's going to impact both those budgets.
It is going to impact both those budgets, so if you want to, again, if you want to include both of them, if we have to amend the language, we can amend the language.
Should we do separate ones?
It's just not our, it's not our budget to reduce.
Let's do separate ones, because one's our operating budget, one's the accommodated account.
Did we actually add to the accommodated account for this, though?
Yes, we did. I have the amounts here for the reduction, if you want them now.
So, you want to pass that to.
Instead of using the amounts, I don't know if any.
Is it accommodated?
It's both. I'm concerned that there might be a few things you need to build into that contract based on the discussion. Now, he did say that he would do the cameras at no extra charge, so I don't know if there's anything else, but I don't want to cement these numbers in concrete until we know for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we do TBDs all the time, out to be determined.
Yeah, so let's leave it at TBD.
Right, I think we should do separate.
Go ahead.
We didn't vote on the first one yet.
No. So, are you ready to vote?
Yeah, I think so.
You have the motion, and it's.
Well, we're not going to do a specific amount, so the motion, I guess, Madam Chairman, is to submit a placeholder warrant article in an amount to be determined to reduce our operating budget to reflect the revised transportation contract.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Oh, that's four, zero, zero. Next one.
Do a second motion, Madam Chairman, to reduce the accommodated account by an amount, or in an amount to be determined, to reflect the transportation contract reduction that's been approved this evening.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that also is four, zero, zero.
I have a question for Eric.
Go ahead.
Eric and or Nicole, question for you. Reading the Boston Globe as I do every morning, I noticed that the legislature has passed an increased allocation for education in the upcoming fiscal year two thousand twenty budget. How does that impact the amount of money that the town of Burlington is going to receive, and does that impact our operating budget at all?
Doesn't impact our operating budget. We sort of discuss an expense-side budget, but it does impact the revenue the town gets in. So, when we have our guideline conversation, we always start the guideline conversation, as you all know, with some sort of negative deficit that we have to close. The majority of the state money they're talking about is what, in chapter seventy, which would be, what do we get, about six and a half million? I forget exactly what we get, but if they increase that allotment, then that would help close the, it's another revenue source that the town has that has the specific purpose of being an offset to the school's operating budget.
Do we have a guest estimate as to how much more we're going to receive?
Not quite yet, but I'll get specifics relatively soon. Have we seen the cherry sheet, has it come out?
No, they haven't.
I don't think they've.
I think it's a Friday.
Haven't finalized it, so it's going to come out, and sometimes they'll do, they have a hard time determining who gets what, so there are many times when they do a per pupil, you'll get twenty dollars a kid or fifty dollars a kid. It's their way of equitably distributing money, but it's not very equitable, so again, the context in Burlington is important, in that the state has a foundation spending definition, so they have an amount that communities have to spend on public education. We spend well in excess of that foundation, as do most communities that are, have the needs. So, the increase in the state budget obviously just helps offset our operating budget, but we're a well-funded school district, but we're not going to, I don't believe we're going to live and die by the amount of increase. We can certainly tell you, from, I think, from fiscal eighteen to nineteen, our. from fiscal eighteen to nineteen, our uh, chapter seventy went up, I think, four hundred thousand dollars roughly, just to give you a scale. So that's four hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue that came into the town to offset um, the operating budget.
Nicole, can you send us uh, some information when you figure out what the impact is going to be to the town of Burlington?
Yep, I can do that. Um, I think the, the state said that they're gonna release those on Friday, so.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Kristen?
Um, so, all right, I have a question with regard to the financial update for July because I was, was trying, like, this would be the first one for FY twenty, correct? So I guess I didn't understand what Dr. Conti said that would just be the budget. We wouldn't be seeing any other, like, I guess I was looking forward to seeing it because we haven't had a July one yet last year, to see where we start. So then, as we move through the year, to get that whole picture. So.
No, I, go ahead Nicole, now, now.
So basically, I think uh, the understanding was that on the first of each month is when I would run the numbers. And then on the fifteenth, I would distribute the reports. So if I was to run it on the first, it's just going to be the budget.
It would, okay.
So the month, I think what we agreed to is the month would close. So June thirtieth closed.
Yep.
And then we would work on the report sort of that first week after it closed. And if we would, we sort of uncoupled the.
Right.
From, from the school committee meeting.
Yep.
The June thirtieth financial report, again, is just a year closeout. It's, it's a much more substantial effort than just sort of running the numbers. And we're working on that and we're going to close out.
Yep.
Just want to reassure you, you said, "Looks like we're going to close out the year without."
No issues.
With no issues. So I'm saying, we're, we're looking at that. We just don't have all the details done. For July, again, the month of July will end soon. And then we should have a monthly report for you for the month of July at, we'll discuss it at the August meeting.
Okay. So because if you ran it, I'm just trying, so if you ran it on the first, it would just be all zeros. It, okay. All right. So that's why we're not seeing anything. So it's when we get it August first, that would be our start to then just see where we start and where we go from there. Is that?
Yeah, and um, also I think just something to note, um, that during the summer, we're having, you know, all of our, our turnover and movement and all of that stuff. So um, I think the projections won't be like as, as, as true as, as, as they're going to be um, become throughout the year.
Right. And I think we saw that in certain areas with launch and revolving accounts in particular. And that was very good for, for me personally and see, and start to learn this better and see it in more depth. So that's why I'm sort of looking forward to this first one that we'll get, just to then see where we land throughout the year. All right.
Yeah, we, we haven't even finished hiring people. So some of, we're, again, once we have people hired and placed, then the salaries actually get very predictable because um, the, the only overtime we pay is typically what custodians and others. So again, we can, our salary number's usually pretty accurate once people are hired.
Yeah. I'm still learning and trying to see that beginning piece now.
I have a couple of uh, questions. One is, as we close out the year, will there be any um, necessary transfers between uh, salary and non-salary or vice versa?
Uh, at, at this point, no, I don't foresee any, any transfers being needed.
Okay. Um, I had another one, but I forget it. You guys have questions?
I, I'm just, I'm still really confused. I don't, I thought the purpose of the financial things was at the last day of the month, we were gonna get a snapshot, just like we would as a bank statement. And I'm not looking for an end-of-year report, but I thought I'd get a June thirtieth snapshot, like the first week or second week of, of the month. So can you explain that to me? I, I don't understand why I didn't get a June thirtieth financial.
That would be an end-of-year, um, that would be the final, because July one is the beginning of the new fiscal year. So if you were to run the numbers for the um, for the month of June, on July one, you would have the end of year without having finished the details of it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I guess you could have run the numbers, but um, will we see an end-of-year report?
Yeah, so basically, once I'm done sort of um, reconciling out all of our grants, all of our special revenue funds, the operating budget, making any reclasses that I need to, um, that, at, at that point, I'd like to issue the, the financials instead of.
But it isn't all done yet. When do you expect it to be done?
In the next few weeks.
Do you want to answer Diane?
I guess what I was looking for was any money that was spent from, up until.
Until that date. It, it, we get a snapshot to see what was spent. I think the end-of-the-year financials would be something different, like you're transferring and closing everything out. But I, I'm looking for a monthly financial, a snapshot at the last day of the month. We get it the following Friday. I thought that's what we had agreed upon, so that we at least can see what money has been spent. I thought that's what the purpose was.
I, I think that is the purpose, Diane, during the year. I'm just saying, I don't think we ever specifically discussed June thirtieth. There's a lot of work. We're, we're still getting invoices. We're chasing invoices into July. We're making sure that the fiscal year is closing. Uh, I'm saying, I, I would rather have the effort been put on that than to show you something where we were in June that's incomplete. So I, I think the concern for June is, did we overspend?
Yes.
And again, we're confident we did not overspend. And now we're just making sure that everything is classified and accurate. And, and I think you'll, you'll get the um, I guess the, the year-end statement, it sounds like relatively soon. We could have given you a June snapshot, but it, I think it would have been incomplete at that point. Um, that was the, the hundred thousand, eighty thousand dollar number that we were sort of tracking as, as we went through. That started, um, I think when we started looking at that in the fall. Um, so I, I, I think reclassifying, we're making sure the lines are all sort of, I guess, accurate. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know the details of what's happening, but it just seems like there's a lot of effort being put in to do exactly what you're asking. Um, June thirtieth is the significant sort of a date to uh, close everything out. But that doesn't mean, we're, we're still paying um, bills into um, into July on the, on the nineteen budget. And you'll, you'll see that closeout again as soon, as soon as we're done.
So I think going forward, and I understand, like, I didn't go with financial analysts behind the scenes, all this other stuff was going on. But I think going forward, I think for consistencies, I'd like to just see a snapshot at the end of the month regardless. And the year-end tie-out thing would be a s- a separate report. That's what I, next year, a year after, hopefully, I'm not going to be here again, I keep saying this, but going forward, I'd like to see the consistency of every single end-of-month and then do a, an annual report.
And again, we, we're fully planning on doing that.
Great.
Again, end of Ju- end of July, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of months. And then have that going into um, into August. Um, certainly, it'll be public at the next school committee meeting um, in August. It just, for July one, Miss, we, we would just basically have the budget that you approved would be the starting point um, of, of July one. So not, not the nineteen that you're asking for would be the sort of, would be the closeout.
Quick question for consistency.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Ways and Means?
I have, this is going back to the bus thing. It just dawned on me. The summer transportation, it couldn't have been done by A and F because, like, we didn't have a contract in place. So how, how is that happening? Or who's paying for it? Or how are we doing it, I guess?
We asked Lab to assist us in finding transportation for us.
Okay.
So the Lab Collaborative that we're partners with.
Okay.
They, they assisted us.
So then, that's gonna be a separate expense from the big bus budget, right? Because you're not gonna have to pay this new vendor for the summer transportation for this summer of nineteen, correct?
We still will have to pay for the buses, yes. We just will not be paying the current vendor.
It'll be a different.
Going to sign a contract with.
He won't, he won't invoice us for summer transportation.
Okay.
Especially transportation.
You'll have a different invoice than the Lab instead.
Right. Summer, uh, specialty transportation does not have to be bid, is that correct?
Correct.
That's why we could sort of solve the problem quickly.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks.
Anything else from Ways and Means? Are there any other questions from the committee? Um, and so that sums up the uh, financial update, correct?
I just had one more. Um, I know the food service.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I don't, I'm not sure if we, I can't remember if we usually vote that tonight or in August. Um, but the receipts for June have come in. So I don't know if, if you guys want to do that in August.
What's us standing on that?
Um, thirty-five thousand, um, nine hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
And how are we planning to cover that?
Uh, we have sufficient funds in international students.
Oh, it's up to you. When do you want the vote? Next meeting? This meeting? I don't know.
Can we do it tonight?
I don't care.
So that would be the, because we agreed, closed out the deficit before sort of the, we close it out to zero, we put in this fiscal year.
Once we've received all of our receipts from the state.
So we received all our receipts, so we ended thirty-five thousand in, in the red for caf.
What was the number, thirty-five?
Nine forty-seven and seventy-one cents.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, um, that we um, vote the sum of thirty-five thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents uh, to be shifted from the international student um, revolving account um, to uh, the school operating account to cover the deficit in the custodian program, uh, cafeteria program.
Second.
Is that where it goes? It does, does it go into the, where does it go?
The school lunch program.
Is that a revolving account? So you want it into a revolving account?
So it doesn't go to the operating budget, it goes to the school revolving account?
Yes.
I amend my motion accordingly.
I second the amended motion.
Any questions? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. Anything else?
Um, Sharon, would you just put on a vocational um, update? They're, they're changing some of the rules um, on the cherry sheet. So Steve, your question sort of triggered something for me is, obviously, we're in the Shawshine catchment area, um, but we also send students to um, Essex Tech. And that changed. So now at town meeting, we vote to support um, students both at Shawshine and at Essex Tech. But the state's starting to relax some of the catchment area rules. So we may have um, students um, attending, for instance, Minuteman, because that's also a um, drivable um, vocational school. So what my colleague in Arlington is doing at town meeting is they just vote for vocational, they, they don't name the schools or the program. So um, it's something I want to bring up when we talk to um, the town. Um, and again, I'm not quite sure what the impact is, but I just think if they're relaxing the, the rules a little bit, um, it used to be that if they offered a uh, specialty that a school didn't offer, so if um, uh, Minuteman offered um, robotics and Shawshine didn't, and please, I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying if that were true, and parents selected that particular vocational program, then they would be sort of allowed to um, to appeal into a different um, vocational school. And so um, I just think those rules are changing. So I just want to, because they changed with Essex Tech um, uh, two or three years ago as well, because that came off the, the cherry sheet. And.
It now has to be covered by the, by the town.
Is this just something you want Sharon to remind you to talk?
Remind me, I, I think at a future meeting and certainly before the fall, um, when we talk about that. I just think we may see more kids going to different, um, different places. And if they're being tuitioned in, um, we have a, we have an agreement with Shawshine, so we're paying that money sort of ahead of time. But we don't have a financial agreement with Essex Tech. It's a per pupil, right? We said we have six kids. It costs us so much per kid. Um, if we get a similar bill for Minuteman, again, which we did this year, we picked it up. But I'm saying, I just want to, I'm not sure in terms of state regulation, there's any difference, excuse me, between an Essex Tech placement and a Minuteman placement moving forward. So that's one of the things we have to discuss. So.
Okay. Um, the last thing on our agenda is elementary school building needs discussion. Is there anything to talk about on that?
Um, no, just again, an update. It's gonna be a standing agenda item. So we're, we're looking at that. I will have, the school committee will have enrollment update in August at our next meeting. I think um, I'll see um, Robin tomorrow, but the Student Information Office, the, the, is, is always very busy during the summer. Um, so we'll see where the, um, our enrollment sits again at the meeting in um, in August. Um, we are working, Sharon has um, kept great notes. And so we looked at different options. Um, if you remember for the later start time, um, Patrick created sort of a repository where, one place where all the information is gonna go. Um, we haven't created it yet, but we will. So we'll have all the options. We'll have um, places for people to sort of submit ideas. Um, and we can sort of have some conversation there. Um, and then Ms. Simon just wanted to be a standing agenda item, so we wouldn't let too much time go by. And then if any of the scenarios, like a um, uh, early childhood center or, or a Mrs. Monica Block careers.
Don't even say it.
But um, one of those other options that you don't like. If people would, if we'd like to arrange a visit to um, a school that potentially looked like that, or to an early childhood center, it would just give us some opportunities to do that in the fall um, ahead of the um, ahead of the April deadline for the statement of interest if we were to um, change from the high school to, to an elementary school.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the committee? Is there anything else from Ways and Means? And there's no one for public participation?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.